Of objections to zoning bylaw Z 21 dash oh one on Monday, February the eighth twenty twenty one at six P M. Recording of attendance, I note that all members of council are in attendance with the exception of Deputy Mayor Henderson, who was unable to be with us this evening. Also have in attendance with us Chris Spear, our Chief Administrative Officer in Treasure, and Paul Knopper, our Clerk and Senior Administrator, along with Xander Gopman, who is our Planner from the Southwest Regional Service Commission. So I will now move to an approval of the agenda.
Also move.
Thank you, Council Bishop and the Seconder.
Second, your worship.
Yes, thank you, Council Michelle. All in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. I will now look to any declared conflict of interest in relation to any matter this evening. Hearing none, we'll move on and we'll move directly to the presentation by Alexander Gopman in relation to the zoning bylaw. Mr. Gopman?
Thank you, your worship. Just give me one second.
Your worship, while Xander's getting set up, just to bring into your attention that the Director of Planning is also with us.
Oh.
Alex Anderson.
Sorry, Mr. Henderson. Didn't know you were on.
No worries.
And welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so everybody can see my screen.
Yes.
I'll begin if you've been. Yep. Good, okay. If you've been with us for a while now, there's nothing, nothing new in this presentation. We are talking about the zoning bylaw, Z 21 oh one. There's a second public hearing or public information session after this one, starting at seven o'clock about the short term rental bylaw. So, you know, your questions about that bylaw, that will be discussed in the meeting, starting at seven o'clock. We're going to start with the zoning bylaw. I've been working on this, we've been working on this with council and the community for quite some time now, and we passed the municipal plan and secondary municipal plan in December, and we're moving right along to the zoning bylaw. So this presentation, it's, it's, you know, a ninety page document. I'm not going to go through everything. We're going to go through big picture changes from the current bylaws at eighteen, which came into effect in twenty ten. So we won't go through every little change and everything in the bylaw. Of course, if you have questions about any, any aspect of it, those are, those are absolutely fine, but just in terms of getting information out there, we're focusing on big picture changes in this presentation. And I'm going to try and keep it short so that we do have lots of time for questions and comments. So a big drive of the zoning bylaw was to increase residential options. So one way of doing that is with some new definitions and new ways of thinking about how you can get housing in. So an accessory dwelling unit before or existingly just means a basement apartment, and having a garden suite in your backyard or an in-law suite in your main dwelling unit, that may, might be allowed in some zones or might not. So we've simplified the definition for accessory dwelling unit. It's any accessory dwelling unit, inside, outside, basement, garage. That would be gardens. And these are permitted as secondary uses in all residential zones. If you have a main, single family dwelling, you can have a garden suite, you can have a basement apartment, you have a garage, you can have apartments over the garage. And there's still controls on how many buildings you can have on a lot. I think you can, can't have more than two accessory buildings. So you get your shed in your garden suite or your shed and garage, that kind of thing. As well as the smaller units, triplexes, so a three unit dwelling would now be allowed in the serviced residential and M R one zones. Currently, you can only do a duplex. And, and we are bumping the estate residential zone up to allowing duplexes as well. There's, there's not a whole lot you can do in terms of multifamily residential and E R zone because it's, everybody's on well and septic. And so that's kind of a limiting factor there. But in zones that allow it, being able to do a triplex by right or convert to a three unit dwelling with terms and conditions from an advisory committee, that's what we're proposing here. And we did pass the secondary municipal plan, which has some controls on design, some best practices, as well as some requirements. So that's really the way that these will be, at least in the town plat and historic business district, if these types of dwellings are developed, they'll, they'll need to meet certain design requirements. And there's a few things in the zoning bylaw as well, not having too many outdoor entrances and staircases coming down. And as well as all of these, I guess, technical interventions, we've also outlined on the zoning map and in the municipal plan, a residential growth area. So you'll see that when we get to the map at the end of the presentation. So another change is, is how we're dealing with the setback from the ordinary high watermark. So currently, you cannot develop within twenty meters of the ordinary high watermark. You have to go through variance process to do that, which, which can be extensive and oftentimes requiring things that we could just require in the zoning bylaw anyways. So in keeping with best practices for this type of coastal development, we're changing that twenty meters to thirty meters, but instead of prohibiting development, we're setting standards and, and including conditions in the zoning bylaw as much as possible. And this does mean that some of, if you're familiar with the current zoning map, there's a strip of green space that goes along most of the outside of the town. That's kind of been that twenty meter setback from the ordinary high watermark. So that's being removed, but it's being replaced with this general provision. So it doesn't need to be mapped, but it still is in effect. And this can allow for low impact responsible development. That's not going to negatively impact the environment or coastal aesthetics, which are very important to town. So if you're doing any habitable building over six hundred square feet, anything you're getting a building permit for essentially, as opposed to a development permit, you, you would require an environmental protection plan, which shows how you're going to deal with erosion and runoff. It's only in that thirty meters, anything beyond the thirty meters, it's, it's whatever zone that falls in. There's also a limit on tree clearing in that zone, and it's not a requirement to plant trees, but in discussing this with council and, and with members of the community, I think there was an attempt to have kind of two aesthetic areas in town. You've got your downtown water street, kind of historic plaque, where you do have development going right up to the water's edge, and you have smaller lots. So those lots are pretty much all cleared already in terms of trees, so they would, they could maintain that cleared state. And so you have that lovely kind of maritime village feel that you can see from the water, and you have really nice views. Now, when you get back into the more estate residential areas that are more treed, that's, that's where the limit on tree clearing would have more effect. So again, you're not required to plant trees, but limiting how much of the trees you're clearing within that, only within that thirty meters would be part of this new thirty meter setback. And no septic systems in that area, just because that's obviously going to increase potential for runoff into the water. So to give people a sense of where this would take effect, it's very similar to the existing green space, except where it comes to downtown water street. And I tried to do a little zoom in here so you can see the patterns of development, how it is going right to the water's edge, but you basically have every single lot developed. So there's not, there's not really any potential for new development there. So this isn't going to really change much of anything in that thirty meters. Okay, moving on to chickens. This is something that is now having chickens in municipalities becoming more and more common. You can, they're common in Saint Stephen and Saint George, I believe. Actually, I'm not sure about Fredericton, but there are bigger cities that are allowing chickens now. Toronto, as a matter of fact, allows chickens. So if you think of the level of some of the residential density there, and, and if they're allowing it, then would it make sense in Saint Andrews? So what we're proposing is to allow chickens in the S R and E R zones only for personal use. Don't want to see commercial operations starting, only female chickens, otherwise known as hens. And you can't have too many of them to limit noise. And, and when you think about roosters crowing and the noise that chickens make, those are roosters, those are male, so those would not be allowed at all. They must be fenced during the day and cooped at night, so we shouldn't have any chickens running across roads. And if they are, then that's a matter for the bylaw enforcement officers. So that's something that can be enforced. And there's a certain distance that coops have to be from rear and side lot lines so that they're not going to impact neighbors. And then any of, any kind of nuisance odor or mess, again, that's, that's a bylaw enforcement issue. So just because I think people sort of want to know, would I be able to have chickens? Would my neighbors be having chickens? As much as we could tell, based, based on lot size and where structures were, again, this is not, this is not your permit to go out and get chickens, but just to give you a sense, so about half the properties in the plat would likely be able to have chickens on them. And then as you get more into the estate residential area, those lots are quite large. So it's, it wouldn't be much of an issue at all having chickens on those lots. Another area and to, to discuss, and this is different from that thirty meter setback, this is, this is called the sea level rise overlay zone. And so this isn't so much about erosion or about runoff. This is really about the coastal waters rising year over year and storm surges getting stronger and stronger and having more and more impact. And so this is based on meteorological projections of what sea level rise will be doing over the next fifty to a hundred years. And obviously, that as that science changes and updates, this is something that would need to be changed and updated as well. This, this zone is not an outright prohibition on development, kind of like that thirty meter setback. If you're able to meet certain conditions, and in this zone, it's really about having habitable areas, mechanical equipment, critical plumbing, electrical infrastructure above the, where sea level rise is projected to be in twenty one hundred, so four point four meters. And that also takes into account storm surges and, and other weather events. So it's actually not super extreme in Saint Andrews. There are a few properties on Patrick Street that are impacted, but for the most part, this, this type of sea level rise is going to be much more of an issue in the Acadian Peninsula and other parts of Canada than it is in Saint Andrews. So good news, good news there. And this is, this is a way someone that does happen, you're planning for the future. Okay, so fences, moving from global climate to individual fences, although these fences oftentimes have to do with deer, so we can't ignore the ecosystem we live in at any point in these zoning bylaws, I guess. So currently, fences are something we, we often will be giving variances for fences. We have people requesting variances, and, and as I said, it's, it's often to do with deer. So inside and rear yards, allowing fences up to two and a half meters or eight point two feet. It's generally a best practice for deer to have fences up to eight point two feet. So in the rear and side yards where these fences aren't very visible, this would be allowed with certain design criteria to minimize that visual impact. So this is an example of the type of fence that would be seen as appropriate, and, and it does get very specific in the zoning bylaw. And this is based on seeing what was out there, seeing how it impacted the visual environment, and having design criteria that really minimize that impact. Because that's, that's what we're trying to do here, is balance people's ability to enjoy their yards, have beautiful gardens, which of course add a lot of aesthetic beauty to the town. And if you have deer jumping in and eating everything, that's not possible, but then you don't want a situation where you've got walls and, you know, very unfriendly kind of fences dotting the town as well. So with existing fences, there's a mechanism to extend that up to that same height, again, with, with sort of specific design criteria. And when it comes to individual, you know, bushes, shrubs, trees, that kind of thing, there's, there's the allowance for the black plastic mesh deer fencing to wrap around those shrubs and hedges. But that's, that's not to be used as a system of fencing. The fencing is, is really outlined in the zoning bylaw. So some other changes distinguishing between public and private utility uses, having some standards for bicycle parking. The town is really moving forward with active transportation. The Transportation Master Plan was last week, it was, it was, I think, given assent by council would be the, maybe the correct way to put it. So there, they'll, they will be having regard for it in all their future decisions. So there are some aspects of that that can be incorporated into zoning, so more ability for people to have bikes and requirements for bike parking. This is only for commercial uses, institutional uses, it wouldn't apply to residential uses in the historic business district. There, there isn't, isn't any reason to have bikes everywhere. There's, there's, there's maybe strategic places where bicycle racks can be placed, and of course, there's signs and other things that bicycles can be locked to there. The mixed use standards, the mixed use zone has, has been, is defaulted to the zone that the use is in, in terms of standards, like setbacks and height and that kind of thing. Given that the mixed use zone is almost entirely in the town plat, and the built form is usually a single family dwelling, we just use the S R town plat standards for that. So there's a bit more uniformity to how mixed use properties are developed, and they fit in more at their neighborhood. If there are more intensive mixed uses, like commercial or institutional, they would require terms and conditions to be developed. And any switching from one use to another in the mixed use zone does require terms and conditions as well from an advisory committee. Section nine of the existing zoning bylaw deals with design in the town plat and historic business district. So that's either been replaced by the secondary plan and design manual or moved to an appropriate section. Flag signs are something that's been a bit of a bugbear, and there's so many that are grandfathered in, it's, it's really impossible to stop their proliferation. So instead of saying no flag signs, businesses will be limited to the number of free, of projecting signs they can have. So signs that are projecting into the streetscape, which flag signs would fall under. So you could choose between flags or sandwich boards, but still trying to limit the clutter on streets. And there's kind of like the residential growth area, there's also an institutional growth area on land that's owned by the Huntsman Marine Center, and I think they're, they're kind of advancing with some of their future plans for how that land could be developed. And the idea with both the institutional growth area and residential growth area is these are very very important land for the town. Even if the town doesn't own it, it really, how that land is developed will have a lot of impact for the town in the coming years. So it's really important that that land is developed with a lot of partnership between the town and residential developers or institutional developers. And one last thing, I think it's the last thing, is that if you're replacing windows in the historic business district, they would be required to be replaced with a similar, as much as possible, window style or a similar, as much as possible, window style to another window on that facade. And that's something that's in the existing zoning bylaw, although it, it's not spelled out super well, so it's been, it's been quite hard to enforce. And then finally, this is the zoning map. This, this is probably not the best time to, to look at details on it. There's, there's a map on the town's website, and if you have questions about specific properties, you can get in touch with the town or myself. But you can see the residential growth area. It's over here, kind of in the bar road section, and then the institutional growth area is over here. And that will be the end of my presentation. So at this point, I think I'll turn it back over to council, and I imagine we'll be doing questions and comments now.
Thank you, Mr. Gopman, appreciate that. I guess, Mr. Knopper, I guess we can now go forward with inviting anyone who has been listening into this to, if they have a question, and those will be done through Mr. Knopper.
Your worship, I would also recommend limiting the discussion at this point to five minutes. There are a number of people on the Zoom call at this point, and in order for us to maintain our time limits with the next meeting, I would just recommend if everyone can keep their questions to five minutes or, or less, or questions and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Knopper, I concur with that.
And in addition, please remember, anybody has the public questions or comments related to this bylaw discussion as per the presentation you just received. So I'm going to go to our first one, I'm going to go to Mary Craig. Mary Craig, you have the Florida Council, if you wish to speak, have comments or questions.
Oh, I'm glad I was just listening, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mary. Next one, I'll go to Mr. Jamie Steele, Mr. Steele, you have the Florida Council in regards to the zoning bylaw.
Oh, no, I'm here for the next, next one.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Steele. I'll go to our next one on here. Susan Legish Lister, you have the Florida Council.
Thank you, Mr. Knopper, no, I have no comments at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to Mr. Vic Miller, Mr. Miller, do you have any questions or comments for council?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I'll go to Ms. Joanne Carney, you have the Florida Council. You've got five minutes for your questions or comments.
Okay, so I'm wondering if Alexander's updated the definition of motel and hotel. Currently, it just says commercial building and parking available, and there is no oversight from the provincial side, it's all voluntary. So I wasn't sure if he updated that. Also, I'm wondering if he updated the definition of B and B. There's also no provincial regulation for bed and breakfast, it's all voluntary. So the only thing that's required through the town to run a B and B is to have someone on site, have adequate parking, and to serve a muffin, and you're declared a B and B. I wonder if the definition of short term rental could be updated as well. Right now, it's not very fine tuned, it simply says a dwelling or portion thereof for nor more than thirty days. There is an issue when you look up the actual definition for dwelling unit. It's, it does say, you know, a room or suite or thereof, but it includes culinary and sanitary conveniences that are provided just for the individual, and then it says it must have a private entrance from the outside. So that would exclude a lot of people from renting a room in their house or for renting their whole house for a week or two for extra cash. So I do believe that the definition of short term rental needs to be updated. There's a possibility that the zoning bylaw is closer to passing than the short term rental, I believe, is still very far away from passing. I, in that case, then the tourist home, the tourist home clause should remain, should remain in this stuff, in this bylaw. So I know you removed the tourist home clauses from this new bylaw, I believe they should remain, so that the tourist homes do not become illegal, because the short, there's no guarantee that the short term rental bylaw will pass before this council has completed their term. I also believe that the short term rental bylaw should not pass before the completion of this council's term, because it's being rushed through far too quickly. There, there is no definition of tourist home in this new document, not in this bylaw document, nor in the short term rental document, the word tourist home is undefined in, in either. Section four point six point five, it goes through the minimum floor areas. I, I did find it a bit confusing when you went from a two bedroom apartment at seven hundred square feet, and then the next line says three hundred and fifty square feet for three or more bedrooms. I don't understand that. But in general, I think if you want to promote more long term rental, I think as people are used to living in smaller areas, so I think that a lot of those square footage requirements could be reduced, so if council and maybe Alexander could go through those, so that people are not discouraged from building more long term rental in town by these, these, maybe they would consider these minimum areas too large. There's a section under tourist commercial zoning. If you look at the tourist commercial areas, there, there's no way, there's nowhere where it says long term rental, you can even do it. It's not as a primary use, nor is it as a secondary use. I think the council really needs to promote any ability to have long term rental in town, and the long term rental should be added as a secondary use for the tourist commercial zone. So perhaps Xander and council could look at adding long term rental as a secondary use in the tourist commercial zone. So like in that, in that zone, it would be reasonable to have a studio or whatnot on the main floor, but have long term rental, say for Algonquin employees in the upper floors. So what are the current regulations for the parking requirements in the Central Commercial District for long term rental? And what, and what might that be versus the short term rental in the Central Commercial District? So one of the reasons to update the motel definition is that anyone in the Central Commercial District could currently run short term rental just by saying even one unit is a motel, just call it a motel, have one parking space, and they can completely bypass any regulations. And the same thing with the B and Bs, they can bypass any regulation just by calling it a B and B and serving a muffin.
Hey, Ms. Carney, I think we're going to have to move on to others, but some of what you've raised is actually more applicable to the short term rental discussion, I think.
So Actually, all of that is related to the bylaw, because the new definitions have to be in the zoning bylaw, and everything I had mentioned is in the zoning bylaw. I have other things to comment on for the short term rental, but thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carney. Mr. Knopper, do we have anyone else? Thank you.
Sure. Your worship, I'll go to the next one. I'm going to go to Nicole G. Can you have a question, Congress Council, and can you please state your first and last name?
My name's Nicole Gowan, but I do not have any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Sorry, I'm going to go to Henry. Henry, you have the Florida Council, if you've got a question or comment, now's the time. As well, please state your full name, first and last.
My name is Henry Cox, and I have no questions, we're just sitting here to listen and learn.
Hey, thank you very much. All right. I'm just going to go to where it says, just plain Steve, just plain Steve, you have the Florida Council, if you've got a question or comment, please present your first name and last name in your comments.
Hi, this is Lindy Townsend, and that's Steve Sealy's handle. I echo all the sentiments of Joanne Carney, and I do think that there has to be a ferreting out of basically, the descriptions of properties, the descriptions of bylaws, I think with the four documents that are out there, that also now includes the design manual, there's now four documents that don't coincide, and since they're all subsidiary instruments of each other, and they should merge, I think Joanne's questions were poignant when it comes to the fact that the bylaws kind of are being rammed through, and the layman or the citizenry of the town, unless you have in-depth knowledge, perhaps you've served on council or you've served on the Planning Advisory Committee, without that, the typical neophyte isn't going to understand these bylaws. And so I'll save this for the next part, which is the short term rentals, but the fines up to ten thousand dollars are draconian, and I think the town deserves more than plagiarized bylaws from elsewhere regarding short term rentals. But I'll take up the short term rental in the appropriate portion of the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knopper? Yep. Well, I'm going to go to Ernie. Ernie, you have the Florida Council, if you have any questions or comments, again, please state your first name and last name. Ernie, you have the Florida Council. Your worship, I'll just move on to the next one. Christina Hill, you have the Florida Council, if you have a question or comment, please present your first name, last name, and your questions. Your worship, I'll just move on to the next one. Christina Hill, you have the Florida council. If you have a question or comment, please present your first name, last name and your questions. Seem to be having some technical difficulties here. Just put her on mute. I'm just going to go. There was some questions regarding in the text here regarding to the short term rentals and just interested in that section. So we'll come back to that. I know Mr. Tom Connor has already written, he has no questions. I'm going to go to Adam. Adam, please state your first name and last name and your questions or comments to council.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one phone caller in here. I'm going to ask 1613-601-6309. You have.
No question.
Phone number 613-601-6309. You do have the Florida council. Please state your name and your question.
He already stated that he had no question.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Chris. Your worship, I have gone through everyone on social media and I'm going to just double check my emails. We're not on social media on Zoom here, and I have not received any email. Your worship, do you want to open it up to another round of questions or comment from anybody else from the floor at this point?
Yeah, we can take a couple of minutes, but if there are any other questions that were covered by those that have been offered the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, so the public, if you do have a question or want to continue asking, there is a thumb raise. Or I can go through or actually please unmute yourself if you wish to speak. I will, I do not see anyone else unmuting themselves. Your worship.
If you want to read. We will then conclude this portion of the meeting and we will reconvene at seven o'clock for the next meeting. So I will look for a motion to adjourn from council.
I'll move. Just wondering if you're going to discuss any of the questions.
Yeah, we just, we just did. Sorry, you'll have to save it for the next.
No, no, I had questions about the tourist commercial zoning and different things and no one answered any questions.
Okay, look, we're in the middle of adjournment. Sorry, you missed the opportunity, but you haven't missed the opportunity because the, as you have said, this is not going to end anytime tonight, so we will be able to do that as a sidebar. I need a second or for the motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Thank you, Council Bishop. All in favor of adjourning? I say no. All right. Any opposed? Hearing none. We are adjourned and we will reconvene at seven o'clock to close session.
So moved. I'll second it.
Hey, thank you.
We have to leave this call?
Nope, you stay on here, guys. Let's, I'll let you know. I'm going to start getting ready for Facebook and letting the public on. So just be ready here.
You might want to speak to, I've heard in the letters and stuff, and even tonight, people are saying we're ramming this stuff through, but nothing can be further from the truth. And I mean, the purpose of the first draft was to put it out in the public so they could provide comments in this opportunities. The zoning by law was on the website for over a year, so.
Right. And your worship, this has come forward, this has come forward a number of times already to council and sent back to staff. It's been at least eight months of back and forth.
Right.
It's a bit behind because we've been so thorough.
Exactly. Because we've consulted with everybody about everything.
All right, council, I'm going to start letting the public in.
Just remind everybody to put their devices on mute. Thank you.
That says on again.
Your worship, just to note, it is 6:59. You have all of council present except for Deputy Mayor Henderson. You also have Alexander Gopin, planner from the Southwest Service Commission online and Alex and Alex Henderson as well as all.
Okay, good. Good. Thank you, Mr. Nopper. I will now call to order a public consultation session on by law 21 dash 01, short term rentals on Monday, February 8, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Recording of attendance, I note that all members of council are in attendance with the exception of Deputy Mayor Henderson, who was unable to be with us this evening. Also, in attendance with the public and council are Chris Spear, the Chief Administrative Officer and Treasurer of the Town of St. Andrews, Paul Nopper, our clerk and senior administrator, and Alex Henderson, the Director of Planning for the Southwest Regional Service Commission, and Alexander Gopin, our planner for the Town of St. Andrews from the commission as well. So, Mr. Nopper, I can turn it over to you to to convene and perhaps outline the rules of the of the discussion here for the general public as we let them on to participate. I just want to make one comment that in fact, before I turn it over to Mr. Nopper to let people into the consultation is that every member of council has received all of the submissions that were 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 sent in by email or any other means. So all members of council have had the opportunity to read your written submissions at this point in time. So we're not trying to restrict any discussion, but we are hoping to get through as many people as we can. And therefore I would ask you to try to summarize your written submissions. Or if you have anything that you, or if you're someone who has not made a submission, we're going to have to restrict the amount of time that we give to each person. Mr. Nopper, could you?
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. Thank you, your worship. For those members of the public tonight, the way communication will happen is via Zoom. You can either phone in or join us on the Zoom link. For those that are watching via Facebook, that information has been provided to you. We will go to each individual person. I will ask you to, I will unmute. I will ask you to say your first name and your last name and present your comments and questions to council through this process. You'll be given, as there are a number of people on the line tonight, we'll go with five minutes to start, and then we will cycle back through for any additional further questions or comments from the public. We would also like to note that that within this process, sorry, I got a little confused here. We will be going through this. We would ask that, again, you keep your your comments concise. I am going to take us through a little bit of a briefing on the short term rental by law. So for council's notification, we did receive 34 letters from the public in regards to the short term rental. A summary report was provided to you with the majority of the letters broken down in a summary format. Number of the comments were highlighting in regards to number of number of permits that were allowed to aspects of that there should be some rules or regulations within the the short term rental by law. There are some comments on reducing the types of restrictions, the inspections to also creating a fair and equal playing field. For those that are not familiar with the short term rental by law, the town is put out the first draft after first reading of the short term rental by law that would look at putting in regulations to ensure the safety of properties and the short term rentals that are being offered within St. Andrews to look at creating a more of a level playing field within those regulations with the hotels, motels and other accommodators. As well as looking at how we can support them throughout the town. There are some other fine details, but I will let the public speak to them. Chris Spear, if you would like to speak to any of this, the C O, you're more than welcome now. I've got to let a few more in.
Okay, thank you. Paul, just to the public, some of the notations of the letters in the meeting or the comments, the last meeting were that the town is jamming this through, and I think that's an unfair assessment. You know, with both this and the zoning bylaws and the others, there's been meeting after meeting, trying to get as much public engagement as we can. As part of the process in the short term rental, we worked with council for several months to come up with the first draft, and that's usually the process. And then we put it out to the public. And the best way to put it out to public is for first reading, make that the official document for consideration. And then I know there's a mail out, put out plus put on Facebook, put it into people's hands just as fast as we could so that we could get everyone a chance to read it and provide feedback. And so council's very open to changes, and that's what this whole process is about, is to hear from you, the public. And so we'll continue to work through this and see where it goes from here. But it's, it's a work in progress and it could have changes as time goes on. But we've done everything we can. We, as far as I remember, I think we sent letters directly to every short term rental provider in town based on the tourism accommodation levy this past year to make sure everyone was as much or could reach out to people as much as we know to let them know this was coming through. We've gotten some excellent comments on it for further consideration. But again, it's just part of the process. So we appreciate you taking the time. And I know on Monday nights, most people have something better to do than to tune into a council meeting. But it's an important subject. Council has heard a lot about why they want to put it in place, that there were concerns Mr. Nopper mentioned. And so now's the point to hear back from everybody to see what you feel about it and if we should continue on with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spear.
Your worship at this point, if you're ready, I will open it up to the floor to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Nopper. Carry on.
Okay. Your worship, I'm going to start with the first block I have. Mark Trudell. You have the floor to council. Can you please state your full first name and last name and your questions or comments to council? You have five minutes.
You mean?
Yep, we're good.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Mark Trudell, and I'm here with my wife, Johnny Smith. And we live in St. Andrews here, and we are the owner and operators of the Homestead Cottage. So we did submit our letter and I'll just try to give a few points here. First of all, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to provide our comments on the the bylaw itself and also to participate in this meeting today. We appreciate that. Personally, we are not opposed in having a regulations to ensure the safety of short term rentals. There's some certainly good elements in the bylaw itself, though we also recognize that some of those safety regulations should be also proposed as well for their long term regulation, long term rentals. But the main issue that we have with the current by law is that there's an implicit assumption that short term rentals are limiting the supply of long term rentals. And in the municipal plan, one of the element there indicate suggested that the town or the council would at least continue to monitor short term rentals to assess to what extent it's affecting housing market and long term rental stocks. At this point here, neither my wife nor I are aware of any study that have been done to try to demonstrate that the short term rental is actually having a negative impact on the long term rentals.
There's certainly some. That is like beyond anecdotal kind of discussions.
And so at this point here, the number of rental units or the maximum number of rental units have been proposed for short term rentals. There's a statement that they've looked at the current market, but there's no indication that that number in itself would have any effect whatsoever on the availability of long term rental supply. And then, so that's, you know, some of the issues. And then at the end of the day, the issue is. And then, at the end of the day, the issue is, why should it be the responsibility of landlord homeowners to basically be responsible for the shortfall of long-term rentals? I think that the town has to look at developing long-term rental strategy, such as increasing the number of apartment buildings, increasing the number of units for seniors, working with the NBCC College to develop student residents. And there's plenty of vacant land around town, either in town or around town, that could be used to build some apartment buildings. And I think my wife wants to add something else here.
Yes, the second thing is about, you know, the suitability of some of the places for long-term rental. I mean, some of the houses that are currently short-term rental are just in the summer because the winter heating bills would be too high for them to be considered as a long-term rental. And another point is also an issue of size. Like, some of the units are very small, so they're suitable for, say, a weekend away, but not really for, you know, somebody to live there permanently. So, that's just another consideration.
And I think that summarized pretty much the major concerns, and you can read all the details in the letter we've provided anyway. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Your worship, again, we'll put this to the public. The council can respond to questions or comments, or can take them as just comments and feedback, and we'll evaluate it another time. Council will get a full report of all the comments that are provided tonight for further evaluation. So, I'm going to go to our next caller here. I'm going to go to Mary Craig. Mary Craig, can you present your first name, last name, and your questions or comments to council? Your five minutes starts now.
It's Mary Craig, and one of my biggest questions was around when you plan to implement this bylaw or when you're hoping to. There are some challenges for some of us who are not currently living in the province due to COVID. Clearly, we cannot get into the province at this point. So, to do inspections or to do some of the work would be very challenging. So, I don't know if you have thought about that. And that's my question for now.
Thank you. No, but we will.
Thank you.
Okay, your worship, I'm going to go to, I have a 1615 number here. I'm going to ask you to say your first name, your last name, and your question or to council. I've got, oh, sorry, it's a 18016154031. Yep, the floor to council.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi. Oh, great, sorry.
Can you say your first and last name, please?
Yeah, it's Wendy Townsend. Thanks for the opportunity to speak on this. So, I did call Ms. Carney after you went into closed session and discussed a number of her 27 points, and it appears that she did send these suggestions when the first notion of short-term rentals was even discussed. But I must say, I take the position that this should be entirely abolished, that it starts from a very draconian position, and that it is patently unfair to limit to have these huge fines. I mean, $10,000 in a misdemeanor, that sounds like the US of A. And while I'm sitting in Utah right now, I am Canadian. I grew up in that town. My grandmother had boarders for the community college, one of them being Ann Murray. So, listen, this needs to be rethought. People need to go back to the basics. I think the town is biting off more than they can chew with this revamp of the bylaws. I think far too many portions of the community are having to lawyer up because they spend hours combing through these documents like that of Joanne Carney. I just heard that she poured over these documents for 40 hours. Unless you hire a lawyer, it's as though your suggestions don't get heard. Secondly, there's invisible and visible economies. The invisible economies are cleaners, the dry cleaners and house cleaners and landscapers. The visible community is whale watching and all the businesses like the Red Herring. What a great place to go. Kevin wants patrons. The hotel wants patrons. This decreases the inventory of accommodation. It relates not to long-term rentals because the summer rentals either get used as long-term rentals when the season is over. But it's just ill-conceived from the beginning. And I don't see a need for this council to have to ram this through. No offense, but COVID-19 has made you effectively town counselors. But unofficially, or if COVID didn't happen, we wouldn't have this council. And we've had a lot of trouble with this council, me being one. 21 of us had to hire a lawyer to push our property rights. I don't think this is the town we want to live in. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knopper. Carry on.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship.
May I ask a question?
Sorry, sorry, Peter. I didn't mean that. You were actually next up. So, you're, Peter, can you say your full name, first and last name, and present to council? And I will remind, and I will remind the public, we are going through each person, so you will get your opportunity to speak and provide to council. So, Peter, again, your opportunity is now to speak to council. Peter, you have the opportunity to speak to council.
Peter, you might be on mute if you didn't realize.
You're still on mute, Peter. Peter, you're still on mute.
We can see your video, Peter. We can hear you.
Now, Peter, your full name, your first and last, and your five minutes starts now.
Yes, Peter Breeze 303, Joe's Point Road, otherwise known as Harding's Point. "A property which has been available for one to four weeks for summer rental for a number of years. I would like to continue to offer that property because I believe that the kind of people who would like to stay there cannot afford to stay in the Algonquin or one of the hotels up by the Algonquin, nor as families do they wish to stay in bed and breakfasts where, with all due respect to the hostess and hostesses, little children can be quite a pain in the neck. So, they would like to have the freedom to run around in open space, which is what we offer them. I was quite surprised to receive a communication from an agent in St. Andrews that this bylaw had been proposed because I had seen nothing, which suggested that 50 units of home rental for one or two or three or four weeks during the summer would in any way disrupt the availability of long-term rental for those residents of St. Andrews who are very, very important to St. Andrews but need 12 or six, eight, 10, 12-month rental accommodation. Show me that information, and I would be very glad to discuss it with you. Secondly, I make the point that the process by which these permits will be awarded is frankly flawed and potentially available to, if I dare use the word, self-dealing. If the process is monitored by and managed by the council without complete transparency, without an assurance that one's application will be treated completely fairly, regardless of from whence that application comes, one might have the feeling that one has lost the application to somebody whose brother-in-law was a member of, excuse me, not the council, but a friend of the friend of the friend. There is no transparency here. This is an attempt, in my opinion, to, and my considered opinion, to offer a lock-in to the Algonquin Hotel, to the existing hotels, to the existing bed and breakfasts for reasons which we, the taxpayers and the offerors of rental property, are not privy, privy, sorry, excuse me, are not privy. So, in sum, if you want to do this, and I think you should not, you must prove to us, the taxpayers and the property owners, that 50, not 40, not 75, not 100, is a legitimate number. You must prove to us that no council member or a member of the council's family has a right to secure such a permit, and that furthermore, said permits will not be capable of being withdrawn for any reason other than a violation of the established rules of safety coming from the federal government and the provincial government, not simply because a neighbor chooses to object to the sound of children enjoying themselves in their neighbor's garden. And I thank you very much for my time."
Thank you.
First of all, can I? I'll continue?
Yes.
Okay, here. I'm going to go to Mr. Shaw. Mr. Shaw, you have the floor to council. Please state your first name and last name and your question to council.
Yes, my name is John Shaw. I live in the center of the old section of town. My questions is not so much about the short term, but it was about the bylaw in general. In regards to the deer, in particular, the height of the fence for the frontage is being six foot six. I find that is unrealistic.
Mr. Shaw, that was at our previous meeting discussion on the zoning bylaw. This meeting is on the short-term rental bylaw.
Can I at least, I was, unfortunately, I was taken away. Is there any chance that I could raise these points?
Your worship?
I would suggest, Mr. Shaw, if you could submit those to the town hall. We haven't finalized any of what was discussed at the previous meeting. I'm sorry you weren't able to participate, but please send them to Mr. Knopper, and they'll be considered by council.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. I'm going to go next one to Mr. Jamie Steele. Mr. Steele, you have the floor to council. Please present your first name and last name.
Hi, thank you very much, Jamie Steele, the owner-operator of Salty Towers. I guess I'm really calling because of that situation. Salty Towers, as you know, is and has been for 100 years now. This is the 100th anniversary of the Seaside Inn, Salty Towers, an accommodation facility that has, I guess, latterly been known as a tourist home. So, I guess one of the things that I am concerned about is that we don't seem to fit anywhere in any definitions that council has at present because it looks like you're taking that term tourist home and removing it or not being friendly to that type of accommodation. And so, I'm a little bit worried, I guess, about being lumped in with some of the things that you're trying to control, given that this short-term residential rental facility was built as such, a large home built as an accommodation facility in which I live, continue to live while people are here renting space. I am an owner-operator, not an owner, not an operator with an intermediary. It is my job. It's what I do for a living. And this present bylaw would limit my ability to do what I do because of the limitations around the number of rooms that would be available to rent. And I just find it, for me, again, because of being in the sort of situation that I'm in, the type of accommodation that we are, that it is really working against what we've been trying to do for myself for 27 years and Marjorie Clark for almost 80 years before that. So, I do appreciate the time and your time and the ability to be able to speak before council. I will note that I have sent a letter with these and other concerns to council. I was late because I didn't submit until today, so you should have that, Paul, in your box, and you can pass it along to council. But I did want to be here tonight just to voice my concern and to any of others who may be long-term accommodation providers in town who are now sort of challenged or maybe challenged with the prospects of this new bylaw.
Thank you.
Mr. Steele, I will let you know I do have a copy of your letter for council. All right, your worship, I'll go to the next one. And now, this one is, it just says iPad 2. I'm just going to ask them to unmute. If you can, please state your full name, first name, last name, and your comments and questions to council. Give them a minute. Your worship, I see no response. I'm going to go to the next one, and I'll circle back. Henry, you have five minutes for council. Please state your full name, first and last, and your question or comment to council.
Henry Fox, but we're still here just listening to, trying to understand.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, your worship, I'm going to go to Vicky Hogarth. Vicky Hogarth, do you have a question or comment for council? Your five minutes start now. Is Hogarth? Seeing none, I'm going to just move on, your worship. I've got a WHT. WHT, please state your first name and last name and your question to council or comment. Your five minutes starts now.
Very much, your worship. I'm here with Pam Vincent, and who submitted a letter to council concerning the matter, the bylaw before you. I will let her speak to the matter she's raised, but my question to either Mr. Knopper or to you, your worship, or members of the council is, what happened or what's changed that's made council think that this bylaw is a possible necessity? That's the puzzle that I'm trying to unravel is, why is this being presented? What's happened to cause some concern enough to create a bylaw to restrict what is a very important part of the tourism business?
Your worship, do you want to respond to that?
Actually, no, but I want to take it under advisement if that's all right because it's a very valid question, and I just don't have an immediate response to that. I have lots of ideas, but in five minutes, I'd like to think about that, and I think council should as well.
Sure. Well, then, maybe I'll just, thank you, your worship. And just to carry on with my brief times, I don't want to hold you up. But the other, even if this bylaw in some form or another does become part of the bylaws of the town, I think was raised earlier the issue, when would you think of an implementation time? And I would certainly encourage council to consider at the earliest an implementation of 2022. As you know, the planning for the tourism season for 2021 doesn't start in 2021. It starts in 2020, or maybe even earlier in some issues, some matters, some events. But people have planned events, people have planned visitors. There's been, I'm sure, reservations made. There's been, I'm sure, reservations made in 2021. So to change the rules midstream, I think would be grossly unfair to those that are currently operating short-term rentals and those that would like to start to do that. The second thing is the number. With respect, I believe that the intrusion into the free market by limiting the number of people that can offer this service is really unnecessary. Let the market determine what's needed or not needed, not regulatory intervention by government.
Thank you.
Your worship, Councilor Drew has his hand raised. Councilor Drew?
Thank you, your worship, and I just want to add something that will answer one of the gentleman's questions. One of the driving forces behind this is the current zoning bylaw restricts short-term accommodations to hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, and tourist homes only. There is no other provision for vacation homes or Airbnb, short-term rentals, whatever you wanna call it. The Council is currently in the process of revising the zoning bylaw. And we're actually, the Council is looking at expanding the ability of short-term rentals, not actually curtailing it. So I hope that clarifies the point as to why this is happening at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Drew.
Well, yes, Mr. Twi, you still have one minute.
Thank you. I thought there was a provision in the, some zones within the zoning bylaw that does allow for this type of rental. I don't have the current zoning bylaw in front of me, but I thought I read that there was some provisions in some zones that does allow for what this bylaw is trying to cover. Maybe I'll forward that on later on if I find it.
Yep, please, thank you.
Thank you, your worship, I'll continue.
Yes.
Your worship, I'm gonna go to Mr. Vic Miller. Mr. Miller, you have the Florida Council. Please state your first name, last name, and your question or comment.
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I'm gonna go to our next one. I have an A D as a screen name. A D, please state your first name, last name, and your question or comment to Council. Your five minutes starts now.
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. I will go to our next one. I'm gonna circle, gonna go to Pam Vincent. Pam, you have the Florida Council. Please state your first name, last name, and your comments and questions to Council.
All right, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Am I unmuted?
You're good.
Yes.
Yes, okay, great, thank you. Okay, I would like to know how this change or this proposed bylaw came into effect. What's, again, why all of a sudden are you doing this? How do you believe that this will help long-term rentals? I think you're taking away a very, very significant part of the tourism charm of St. Andrews. I believe if there is a long-term problem, it revolves around the students at the college and the staff at the hotel. I don't see how penalizing the short-term rentals helps the long-term. If there needs to be more long-term accommodation in the town, then that should be addressed as something, but you shouldn't penalize the short-term people, that the people who have short-term rentals. Out-of-town people who have properties here, they're going under double taxation. So to be able to do a short-term rental helps them with the cost of their properties if they eventually want to move here. You have severely hampered other people who potentially would want to buy a property in St. Andrews because now they have this problem if they were wanting to do a short-term rental. I would like, and also your rules and your regulations are extremely heavy-handed. When you get into detail of the seventeen-page document, you are asking that these rooms, these houses be governed under the same kind of rules or regulations that you would do with the Algonquin. You want two million dollars insurance, you want egress windows, you want carbon and oxide things. You want, I mean, it's very, very, very heavy-handed. And I'm in extreme objection to the introduction of this bylaw. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Worship, I will continue. I will go to Christina Hill. Christina Hill, you have the Florida Council. Christina, are you there? I know Christina was having difficulty with her mic before. Can you hear us, Christina? We're still having difficulty hearing, can't hear you. Christina, I would recommend, I will put a phone number up if you wanna just try calling in that way. I'm just gonna go to the next person on the list here, which is Ms. Joanne Kearney. Ms. Kearney, you have the Florida Council.
Okay, thank you. Rob Kearney would also like his time right after me or sometime. I've gone over this document extensively, five minutes isn't enough, so if you can circle around back to me at the end if there's time. There is a Facebook group page, St. Andrews Vacation Rental Owners. If anyone would like to join that, St. Andrews Vacation Rental Owners. So, I still think that this timeframe is inappropriate. Definitely, if it does go through, it shouldn't go through till January twenty twenty-two, as some other people have said. I have been following every single council meeting for a year and a half. I've been waiting for this document since at least last August was promised it and it's been pushed and pushed and pushed. I congratulate the Council for getting, they've had a lot on their plate with the municipal plan and the secondary municipal plan, the transportation, now this bylaw and the short-term rental. This is a long, complicated document. There's a, it's not an easy document to get through. There's a lot of loopholes, there's a lot that the Council doesn't understand fully, these different loopholes and the complications of this document. And to push it through now is not appropriate, especially with COVID and people have expressed their concerns with that. The tourist season is already planned, many things are already booked. It's inappropriate to push it through. So, there is there's a real shift in the rental dynamics. I think we do with this, we have to consider that St. Andrews is unique. We're not like other places, not other towns quadruple or even more, their population in the summer. We need to have space for these people. We have advertised as a tourist town. We're proud of ourselves for increasing tourism to support our businesses. And we need places for people to stay. As a whale-watching operator, often have people call and cancel due to, they'll make a booking and then they'll cancel because they can find no place to stay. The, I don't think there's many places in Canada in general that have a college with no dormitory. I'm not sure how that got through, that the college was allowed and no dormitory was built. St. Andrews has a population of seventeen hundred people. There's two hundred and fifty students that come into this town for three seasons of the year. That means one out of every two or three houses has to have a student, has to accommodate a student because there's no dormitories. That's one out of every two or three houses has to take in a student, at least one student. This is unacceptable pressure on the town and for us to put through like a whole short-term rental document just because there's no dormitories may be inappropriate. There may be a way to develop dormitories that has students in the winter and Algonquin employees in the summer. You could even shift the school year to allow for that. I did send in a twenty-seven comments, you know, of corrections to the document. There's no way I'm gonna have time to go through all these tonight. I can pass it on to anyone who's interested, the Council has already received it. There's many problems with the definitions, as I've already described. Basically, motels, hotels, B and Bs, and short-term rentals are all mushed together. There's very, very little clarity between the three. There's a huge misconception in this document that the province regulates motels, hotels, and B and Bs. They do not. There's something called Experience Select New Brunswick, and that is completely voluntary program. There's no regulations at all for fire insurance, for room size, for anything. The town has a little bit of regulation for parking in these areas and a bed and breakfast has to serve a muffin, but that's about it. So
You're at thirty seconds left.
Okay, so I have asked, how many numbers are principal residents and how many numbers are secondary residents? I've not received that data. I have asked that the town do some data collection like other people have said, and that has not been forthcoming. There's big problems with the tourist homes, the definition, if that will be, if they'll be grandfathered in, will that be forever? There's problems with the amount of the insurance required for asking for guests' addresses. There's a problem where the estate residential zone is in the wrong place. Anyways, on and on and on, there's at least twenty-seven different problems plus more. I'll hand it over to Rob and he can make some comments.
Rob, if you would like your time, you can take it now.
Hi. What do I wanna add? You know, I sent a letter in months and months and months ago about this, so I think everybody probably got a copy of that with my suggestions.
Secondary homes, primary residents, I didn't get to that.
I don't know, man. Just what I'd say is you guys, you don't have time to tackle this right now. I've listened to this tonight and I've been in on these council meetings for quite a bit in the last year with Joanne. I have yet to hear anybody call in happy about this. I don't know, any, anything positive about it. It's all pretty much questions. Lot of people aren't really interested in this and just kinda wanna be left alone. Maybe, you know, we should be dealing with fire and safety, like that's the low-hanging fruit. Hard to argue with that. Maybe that'd be a good place to start. It's hard to know how many homes you're gonna have here in town with the COVID. All that's in flux makes this a really bad time. And I just don't feel that the Council, no disrespect, but I just don't feel like the Council has time. I'm hearing this in every different way, like the public is just starting to get up onto speed. You give this, you guys, give these guys a little bit longer and you're gonna get inundated with more people as they hear about this. And just to close, what I said before is there's no way that you are gonna solve your rental problem in town with short-term rental. Like the one, that thing's gone. Nobody's, that's the days of the ninety thousand dollar house that the couple buys, the extra house and puts a bunch of students in there or long-term rental. Prices are going up here, that just doesn't exist. You're not gonna, you should be going with the energy here. Taking some money from those of us that have short-term rental, taking a little piece of that pie, pooling that money together and trying to create a scenario where you can, I wouldn't call it subsidized rent, but where the town can pitch in with some land, maybe some services and things to try to get some long-term rental units built in the town with a developer and try to solve the problem with the school. I think, again, what Joanne, we talked about this earlier, change the school year a little bit and see if you can get a dormitory that's full year-round with our summer staff and Algonquin summer staff and then your students at the school. Maybe the first two weeks of the school could be at home on the computer because there's a little overlap there while those people move out from the summer whale-watching season, yada, yada. And then the students come in. Try to solve those problems first. And comes back to, we don't have time, like these are big overarching questions about the future of the town. And I guess I just leave it there. I think you need to give this a year. Need to let, make sure everybody knows about this, get the best comments in that you can. You can't do anything about it this year, it's too late. And try to do something for next year. You could do the fire this year, I'm all for that. Soon as you could get people out and make sure the houses are safe, there's smoke detectors, things like that, you know, go nuts. I don't think anybody's gonna argue with having enough smoke detectors or a place to park, a window to get out of if there's a fire, right? Nobody wants that. But the other stuff, the big overarching philosophy here, I think you need to take a little bit more time. I'd love to hear a little committee that could do something on this long-term rental idea. Is there any federal provincial money towards an eighteen-unit thing? Could you put that somewhere, affordable housing? Could you try to get a dormitory in there? I heard there was some money that expired, what, like in December? There was some government money, the federal money that some places, like maybe we could have applied for, maybe that'll come up again. Get a dormitory and try to figure out how we could get that dormitory firing on all burners full all around the whole year, part with students at the school part of the time and the rest of the time with the summer staff. And that would go a long ways to solving this problem and take a little bit of money from us that run these short-term rentals, right? That's fair. Take a little bit of that money and put it towards that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Knopper? Yep, your worship, I'm just gonna go to the next available person here. Give me one second. I'm gonna go to Dale Chambers. Dale Chambers, do you have a question or a comment for Council? Your five minutes starts now.
Thank you, Mr. Knopper, Mr. Spear, your worship and counselors. It's hard to follow that act. I'll just follow up on what Joanne and Rob say. I am opposed to the bylaw as it stands, although I know there was a lot of work put into it. But I've been in the business for over twenty years and have a lot of experience and I feel that some of the recommendations are ill-advised in the real world. You know, I guess the main question I would have is, can this be tabled for a later date? When there's more discussion from the major stakeholders? Can we put this off at least until the next season? Instead of, I don't know when you plan to implement it, but it's obviously before the next election, which would be in May. So, that would be my recommendation, as Rob Kearney had said previously to me. Again, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, your worship, I'm gonna just go to the next caller here. I believe this is going to be Christina Hill. It's a one four one six three four six zero two seven five phone number. You have the Florida Council. Give them a second, Council. Again, phone number, one four one six three four six zero two seven five. You have your chance to speak with Council.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me? Sorry. It was also giving me trouble. I have some technical difficulties today. I do want to start by saying thank you to all the public that have called in and those that have spoken about the situation. And I do wanna thank the Council. I know it's a lot of work to put this forward, but I do have some questions and I'm just wondering when there will be a forum to have the questions answered that the public has brought forward. You know, we have bought a home here in St. Andrews and we're not terribly wealthy people, but we bought the Mallory home because it was a dream of my husband's and mine. And he has, his family is from St. Andrews, the Gilmans, and they grew up here. And so, we, you know, we wanted to make this an opportunity to raise our family here at a certain point. And his aunt does live on site. My parents have now retired here, so the short-term rental that we have is only available in the summer. And the stipulations that are being put in place are quite extensive. And my biggest question is the timeframe. And, you know, I don't really have issues with the bylaws as it is, except I don't understand why there's a limit to fifty. I don't know how many towels that people have signed up for the towel. But for the actual stipulation for the bylaw and what has to be done, the timeframe is problematic for many of us. And the question is, knowing that, I think somebody brought up earlier, Um, and the question is, knowing that, I think somebody brought up earlier, that the tourist season is already underway. Um, it's very important, you know, we have, we have bookings taken care of for the summer and to not be able to adhere to those and promises that we've made to people who want to be able to come and enjoy this town um are very important. And uh it's, it's incredibly uh important that we're able to adhere and also honor the commitment that we've made to the public. So the timeframe, I'm very curious about as to when this will be going forward and if there will be an opportunity to have a discussion. Um, like I know we are posing questions, but I, you know, I haven't heard any answers to any of the questions that forward. Um, and I live in the city of Toronto from most of the time of the year, except through COVID. And also, we would have town councils, their MPP, um, and uh, and city counselors. And I'm wondering if there's a forum to be able to have this discussion with the citizens that are concerned about this bylaw for this town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I guess I can answer that. Uh, we, we're, we're not, uh, a couple of comments tonight, which uh we take under advisement, but uh this council is not trying to ram this through. And so we have heard many people speak tonight about the timing of this and we will take that back and consider it, and there will have to be more discussion of this down the road. So I can't give you a definitive answer of what the time will be. But it's not tonight and it's not tomorrow night, it will be at some point in the future.
Knopper? Yep, thank you, your worship, I'm just gonna go to Mr. Tom O'Connor. Mr. O'Connor, you have the floor to council.
I have no real questions. I think most of the points that were made by other people were done so more eloquently than I could. I also feel like they're on the ground in St. Andrews. I do have some definite concerns about the timing because we can't, obviously, even get across the border. So that's, that's an issue for us. Um, so if there was something to happen in twenty-twenty-one, which seems unlikely, that would be a real problem. Twenty-twenty-two feels challenging as well because we may not be able to get up there until the fall at this point. And so lining up contractors and having obligations, you know, there's just a lot of issues around that. Um, so I would just advise a much slower pace if you proceed at all. Uh, in general, I do object to it. I think there's uh other solutions for the long-term rental market that I would recommend. I, I think this is, you're, you're utilizing the wrong tool to solve the long-term rental market. So that's an issue from my perspective. And um, I guess that probably covers it. I mean, I, in general, I just, I, I just don't feel like this is the right solution. I do feel like there's a problem, and so it's not as if I can't appreciate what you're trying to accomplish. I just wish you would be doing it in a different way other than this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Give me one second, your worship. Uh, your worship, I'm gonna go to Nicole G. Nicole G., you have the Florida council, please present your first name and last name, and you have five minutes. Well, again, ask Nicole G. You have the Florida council.
Thanks, sorry about that. Um, it's Nicole Gowan. I guess I don't really have any questions because my two properties are in Bayside, which I'm incredibly grateful for in this moment. Um, after I read through the uh, the bylaw, I'm someone that interprets government policy for a living, so I can completely appreciate the amount of time that went into this. But I'm also someone that's been a landlord and short-term, had short-term rentals off and on for twenty years. And oh my gosh, it's pretty, pretty comprehensive, guys. Um, it's gonna be difficult, I think, for a lot of people to adhere to what you've put in there. And I think you're making it hard on ordinary people. I was hoping to sort of move some of my business dealings into the town. And um, this would definitely deter me from, from doing so. I guess I just wanted to put that out there. And um, I mean, I know probably you're not gonna roll this out right away, but like just to give you some context, like if I was in town, what I have on the books for twenty-twenty-one is over thirty thousand dollars in short-term rentals. Like, if that was taken away from me because of something like this, but that would be really devastating. So from an economic standpoint, I would think that that should be a huge consideration for your um, your townsfolk as well. And so that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, your worship, I'm gonna go to Stephen Crabbe. Stephen Crabbe, can you present your first name, last name, and your questions or comments to council? Again, my last, Mr. Crabbe, uh, you have the Florida council. Good time, Mr. Crabbe. Okay. Your worship, I believe that takes care of everybody on Zoom. I'm just gonna do one last check-through. Henry.
Hi, it's.
Yep, Mr. Crabbe, go ahead.
It's Steve Crabbe. I'm, I'm just listening in to the uh, to the meeting and just a couple of comments that uh taking away such a thing as short-term rentals in this community is uh especially at this time is, it's a very drastic move. It's uh, taking opportunity that people don't have everywhere. And Nicole uh Gowan expressed it very clearly, so that's all I have to add. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe. Mr. Crabbe, your worship, I'm just checking my emails to see if I've received any. Uh, your worship, uh, let's see, at this point, I haven't received any further email comments. Would you like me to open it back to the floor to any last comments from Zoom?
I think so, especially if somebody's gotten missed, but uh we're not gonna go back through the whole thing we just went through. But if somebody did get missed or thought of something, we, we should take those comments.
Yep, your worship, I, I know that Ms. Carney had uh an additional comment or question. Uh, would you like to proceed?
Yes, certainly.
Sorry, sorry, Ms. Carney.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I was talking with uh Paul Knopper and he was mentioning that there would be another draft after this meeting and that there would be another public, um, there would be another meeting like tonight to comment on the new draft since there's likely going to be a lot of changes to it. So I wanted to make sure that happens, that there's another public meeting before the second reading. I don't want this to be pushed through the second reading without people being able to see the new draft. Um, the one thing that hasn't come up a lot is the cap. Um, I'm not sure people are really understanding what's going on with this document with the cap of fifty rentals. Um, some people did note it as being very arbitrary, lacking data. Um, and also lacking your yearly assessment on that to decide if that number could be increased, say if dormitories were built or whatnot. Uh, there certainly should not be a cap in uh short-term rental in primary residences. Um, right now, it has a cap of fifty on all sorts of residences, including the tourist homes and whatnot. But I think we need to consider that um finances aren't, aren't what they used to be. The cost of living um has gone up, not in proportion to wages, which have not gone up proportionally to the cost of living. Um, only thirty-seven percent of people in Canada have pensions and that's dropping. And it's very low in St. Andrews to have a job with a pension. People need to be creative with their finances. We should not be capping primary resident short-term rentals. Um, people need to be able to uh pay their mortgages. Uh, the cost of housing has grown up dramatically and to be able to have a granny suite or duplex or that, that allows people to get into homes and not always be renting. So that cap should be removed, especially for um primary residences. Um, there, there may, there may be a, a case to say that we don't want someone from, say Quebec City or Toronto coming in, buying up five houses and putting them into the tourist uh short-term rental market. And, but I, I don't see that has been a problem. I have not heard that that has been happening. It's, it's, they may be coming into Moncton and build and buying up five buildings, you know, which I've, you know, that's big business, but I don't see them coming into the short-term rental small business market. Uh, so I'm, I'm not sure that that even justifies this document. Um, I think that there needs to be, uh, the tourist commercial zone is an issue. Um, short-term rental is a primary use in the tourist commercial zone. However, you have not exempted the tourist commercial zone from the short-term rental bylaw that, that exists right there. It's actually the only zone in, in the whole town of St. Andrews where short-term rental is listed as a primary use. And you have not exempted the tourist commercial zone, and that needs to be exempted from any bylaw if it does go through. Um, I think this is a difficult thing to have enforced, and I think it's very costly to enforce. I'm not sure if you've come up with any data of how you're going to enforce this. I don't even think it was that successful trying to enforce the levy, let alone enforcing a whole short-term rental bylaw. So there needs to be a lot more discussion and um, uh, you know, with, with that. Um, if, if there are any kind of fees, I don't see anything in there that you're even putting any of it towards long-term rental. At least fifty percent of anything that is collected in any, any fashion whatsoever should go towards long-term rental, since that is your goal. Um, the tourist home, the tourist home definition I mentioned does need to be added back in. The tourist home should be added back into the bylaw. Uh, um, keep in mind, it should go back into the zoning bylaw. Um, the, the tourist homes, the basic definition is um single-family home providing sleeping accommodation to the public. Uh, so, and it, tourist homes are allowed right now in the current zoning bylaw in almost, in almost every um zoning area in St. Andrews, except I can't remember, it might, might be the mixed zone or the multi-residential one. I'm not sure where it's not allowed, but it is, tourist homes are allowed almost everywhere in St. Andrews. So if we are gonna delay the short-term rental uh bylaw or scrap it completely, then we need to add the tourist home uh definition and clauses back into the zoning bylaw. Again, I mentioned that a lot of definitions need to be updated for motels and B and Bs. Also, campgrounds aren't, aren't listed. People can rent, can rent an RV for the summer, say at Kewon's Campgrounds, and then have, and then re-rent it out as a short-term rental. That has not been considered in your bylaw. Um.
Hey, Ms. Carney, I think we're gonna have to go on and see if there's anyone else who wants to comment. Thank you again.
Yeah, I know he led to cut me off, but that's okay.
Sorry, but you're worthy. Mr. Knopper, is there anyone else who wishes to comment?
Yeah, your worship, I have Peter with his hand raised. Peter, uh, please state, go ahead, Peter.
Uh, Peter, please, again, thank you very much for giving me the floor. Um, I would like to um comment on Mr. O'Connor, who says um that this is the wrong tool at the wrong time, and I completely agree with him. I think if the town has a serious problem um with uh accommodation, then we must deal with it in a more uh, a, a longer-term fashion, not simply restricting the number of summer rentals because I and several members of my family who have homes which are not occupied in the winter would not make them available for summer rental if this regulation came into being. So that is a number of beds which are, will be taken off the market for otherwise high-spending, we hope, tourists. The other point I would make is Ms. Carney and I think others have said that this is an administrative nightmare. I calculated that over a course of two months, assuming family of four in a rental accommodation would generate eighty-nine thousand six hundred pieces of data, which your council would have to process. Eighty-nine thousand six hundred to comply with your regulations, which, gentlemen, with all due respect, I think is an excess of control over what should be an encouraging and inviting invitation to enjoy St. Andrews in the summer. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Your worship.
Hi, this, uh.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make comments for, hi, this is Lindy Townsend. I'm gonna make comments for my daughter, Ailee, who's a stakeholder in the town. Um, basically, she's saying this. Um, she's echoing, of course, all of the logical arguments that have been raised. And, and I'm not gonna get into it, but she wants to add that why aren't the people who really know the bylaws well? It doesn't seem, it seems like there are lots of us who are property owners who understand the bylaws and understand that they're not quite merging or holding hands with each other between the documents, that the spirit of this could be absolutely a community effort. And I apologize if I seem like I'm angry, it's just my tone and everyone says so. But my daughter said, Mom, just tell them that maybe hand this over to community members. Rob is erudite and he's really laid-back and cool. You don't get cooler than, than Jamie Steele. You know, Dale and Mark have rented our property. And what I wanted to say about that is when it goes through a real estate agent, Dale and Mark already have it all figured out. And all the other real estate agents already have it figured out before the guests even arrive. They know their name, they have a debt, damage deposit. The visitors and the owners trust each other because they're using a trusted um facility to go through, like a real estate agent. Um, but I do think that um Mr. Gru, he, while you did add to the argument, starting out at fifty units doesn't start a, a sort of community conversation. So what I'm hearing and what my daughter is hearing is that why don't you hand it over to us? And we'll come up with a really great collaborative agreement. Paul, I wanted to say I did find the code for the phone and that's why I'm on it, so I apologize for that. Council, I understand you're tired. We're battle-weary as citizens because we just feel like it's so hard to have a discussion. While these little community efforts of public meetings are helpful, they're one-sided. And, and, and you can't take it on advisement. Because when you do, that's when we become irate and hire lawyers to try to voice our opinion. There's gotta be a better way here, people. Look, Kate was my teacher, Edie, I'm just saying, listen, I don't like to be cut off. I'm trying to add community into this.
I realize that, but we, I understand what you're saying.
Mayor, all due respect, we don't get any feedback. And look at the time Joanne Carney and Rob have poured into this document. They know more about this than you guys do. I happen to know more about these bylaws. Listen, I guess that your job is hard, I'm not diminishing that. But give us some respect and add us in as stakeholders. If you had added some property owners into the committees, into the committees that were those four documents you're revising, you could have done it in an abridged amount of time and with more erudite people involved. Not, and it's not an offense, it's not a dig. It's just that we, when we have to review these documents, we're not doing it to entertain ourselves. We're doing it to protect ourselves. And I think you should really, really think about a committee that involves the stakeholders that spoke tonight. We elected you, not the other way around.
Thank you for that input.
You bet, you bet.
We'll think about that. Mr. Knopper, is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Uh, through your, your worship, I have one more person that joined, Michelle Greenland. Uh, you have the Florida council, if you wish to have a comment or question.
I can, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you fine.
Thanks so much. Thanks so much for having me. I just wanted to bring my perspective a little bit of someone who's originally from, sorry about my kids in the background. Um, someone who's originally from Charlotte County. I've lived in St. Andrews for thirteen years. I'm also a manager at the St. Andrews Biological Station. And I also wanted to bring the perspective of someone from the community who tries to attract leading candidates that come and live in St. Andrews. The options for us here um for additional income are very limited. We routinely lose out on candidates because they can't find additional income for work for their spouses. And short-term renting provides additional avenue for keeping those candidates in town. Um, I'm hopeful that the council will settle on a happy medium for us that ensures there's some regulation in place, but also helps the town grow, maintains opportunities for additional income in a town where that is limited, and fosters the ability that we can, so we can continue to attract progressive science minds to come and live here with us. Um, I appreciate and commend the council for trying to take quick action to make sure that the town's not bought up by developer types because this is something I don't think anybody wants to see. Um, we, I think everybody who I've talked to appreciates um a little bit of regulation in place, like many people have said on the. We, I think everybody who I've talked to appreciates a little bit of regulation in place, like many people have said on the phone. You know, requirements for fire extinguishers, smoke alarms, et cetera, and some sort of safety of our guests is definitely a concern for everybody. And I, I think that's appreciated, that we'd have some sort of regulation for that in place. I also appreciate the difficult situation that the town is in with the lack of long-term rental opportunities. And I just concur with many of the people who have spoke already today, that I don't feel like this is the appropriate mechanism to tackle that issue. Nor do I feel like the bylaw would make any difference in that respect. I suggest that we, that the council has a working group in place where we had short-term rental, people who have short-term rentals of different, there are, you know, we all are different situations. I myself only rent for about five weeks a year. Some people have businesses. Some people have tour or vacation homes that they also rent out. And it would be nice to have a group of us together with other people in the council, so we could try to more holistically capture what might be a realistic and feasible for those different short-term rental situations. My, to my situation in particular, renting for five weeks of the year, many of those requirements are onerous and it's very difficult to understand their necessity. Some particular items that I thought should be amended. The access to financial statements, books and documents felt like a real invasion of privacy for me when I was reading it. Random checks as a person who only rents for five weeks a year, my privacy was paramount and the privacy of my guests for those five weeks that I am renting is also a concern for me. Some of the additional requirements, like floor plans posted everywhere. I just, you know, for a layperson like me, those things just seem kind of excessive and like they would take me more time to put together than I would actually be renting during the year. I also didn't appreciate the limit like everybody else, liability insurance coverage management. And you know, the neighbors and stuff like that was excessive. So that concludes everything I had. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Knopper. Your, your worship, that is, everyone has had an opportunity on Zoom to go through. If there is anyone else that hasn't had an opportunity to speak seconds, your time is now. If you turn on your screen and your microphone, otherwise we'll put it back to council. Just give it a minute here, your worship. Your worship, I'm not seeing any other movement on that.
I'm going to turn it back to council. Council, does anyone from council want to make a comment, having heard what we've heard, you know, in this session? And I will make a comment at the end. It's the, if no one else wants to comment.
All right. I think in general, one thing we should point out, or I may have pointed out at the start, is that this was a way to get it to the public. And so it's always kind of a happy thing when people actually pay attention and have given us a lot of feedback. But I think we've been kind of going back and forth on this one for between the municipal plan and this, which, because the plan also kind of touched on this issue, which is how we got here for about a year. But yeah, I think from this, you can see that we haven't really come to a clear answer, which is why we put this out to start getting thorough public feedback. Whereas without this out there, we, we really weren't because we didn't have anything to kind of start with. So that'd be my two cents right now. I tend to fall into the camp of a lot of the people that kind of put their two cents in that it, it might be a bit overly regulated at this point. And we need some kind of way to let people do what they want with their homes, but still get long-term rentals in this town. And I guess if people really care about that, and this will be my other last comment, because it's something I keep going on about the last four years. If you know anyone at MBCC that has power, get them to build not dorms. I don't think they like dorms, but you could put several apartment buildings in their back lot. They have acres of space back there and they could fix this problem just by doing a private-public partnership or however, in getting apartment buildings back there. And so that's my two cents on this whole topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Harrison. Anyone else want to comment from council? You have Counsel Gru. Counsel Gru.
Thank you, your worship. I think, I think one thing that is universally recognized by, by council, if I could speak for that, is that the status quo is just not an option. Is, we're in the process right now of amending our zoning bylaw. The current zoning bylaw, if people have a chance to look at it, is extremely restrictive when it comes to short-term rentals. And council right now is looking at increasing that flexibility. So we're looking at these options and, and certainly the input that we've received tonight is very valuable. And I'm certain that all of the councillors are going to take that in consideration as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gru.
Anyone, any other councillors don't want, I, I will just comment and just reinforce what's been said by two councillors that this is nowhere near the end of this process. We, clearly we've gotten a lot of feedback already and there seems to me to be a need for more consultation. But right now I think there needs to be a regrouping of council and to talk about what the next steps are. And once we get the summary of what's happened tonight, I think council will need to deliberate a bit further and determine whether or not there are some things that we heard tonight that caused us to take some directional changes and then go back for more consultation from the public. So I, I think we're, I just want to assure the public that they have been heard. Everything that's been said here and everything that was sent in has been given to council and will be considered by council. So we're not, we're not rushing this through as, as we were accused of. And it may well take much longer than what we had hoped for, and we will make that determination and inform the public. Counsel, I think we're at the end of the meeting and I will look for a, a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Also move. I'll second it.
Thank you, Counsel Akagi. Thank you, Counsel Bishop. All in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye. We are adjourned and thank you to all the members of, of the public who participated tonight. It is appreciated.
Good night, all.